Professor Huber, are you ready? Okay, let's resume the hearing. First point, Professor Huber, have you been able to review the email from respondents regarding the Excel sheet of Mr. Kozmerek?
Yes, we have, and I mean, this is turning into an unnecessary circus, so we have decided not to submit any Excel. We'll reduce our claim based on the settlement agreement, and we will explain how we have reduced it. We're still calculating the exact numbers, so that's it.
Let me clear, so what you will be showing on Friday through Mr. Kozmerek is not a revised calculation in the form of a demonstrative exhibit?
Probably not, no.
But let's be clear about it, because what it is here is that the respondent asks for clarification about the calculation of the damages. And I understand you to say, look, yeah, we have small adjustments to be made, and then the respondent says, well, look, what are these adjustments? And you say, well, look, we will now explain them orally, or you will explain them also with the assistance, with the aid of a demonstrative exhibit?
Well, we'll see. I mean, if we do it orally or in writing, doesn't really matter to us, but the problem with the letter is that it comes with a number of conditions. I mean, we offered to submit this Excel sheet to explain, and I suppose we're still prepared to do that, but I mean, just to explain our reduction, and that's it. I don't see that this is such a big deal, quite frankly. I mean, I mean, it's possible, we're reducing our claim, shouldn't be a problem to anyone. We will present a calculation if we do it orally or in writing, that's fine, but there should be no conditions attached to our explanation of our reduction of our claim. That's not the way it should be done.
I think it's a very, very, very big deal. Claimants bear the burden of proof for their claim. They want to reduce it, but not tell us how, or surprise us with their explanations. Our, as he called it, conditions were simply asking for highlights to show that there is not anything other going on, surreptitious other changes, and Professor Huber's reaction right now shows you that that was precisely their intent, to smuggle in other things, and I'm very, very concerned about the good faith in this arbitration, and that in itself contains a problem, not just for Wattenfall's credibility, I couldn't care less for that, but for the sanctity and integrity of this arbitration. We have a right to see these numbers, and we would like to see that just the changes that they allegedly, arguing they wanted to make, are made and not others. And this needs to be seen in the context of the many, many letters that Wattenfall wrote saying they had new issues, they wanted to address new arguments, make changes to their calculation, et cetera. And this is now two days, we've asked for updated calculations if they needed to make changes for months, and you've seen the delay tactics just over the last 48 hours.
Let's take what we have. Could you please go back to slide 98 of your opening statement, Professor Huber? No, just, that is page 107 you were showing. I thought you were, let's first start with page 98, slide 98 in your slide deck. I checked that with, I think it's paragraph 360, I think it is, of your reply memorial, and those numbers are the same, basically, what I see, that's correct? And you have checked that too, Dr. Konrad, so that's, so, therefore, so the question arises at slide 107, because you explained to us that those figures were slightly different.
Yes, but if you see that there are references to where these adjustments have been made in Mr. Kozmerek's report, so this is nothing new.
This is nothing new, then...
Mr. President, that's incorrect. We checked it against the appendix C1 updated, that's quoted, and we couldn't find those numbers in there.
We know there's an appendix C1, but what does appendix C1 updated mean?
It's called updated in, with their second report, but we checked it against that, and those are not the numbers.
Well, we will, I mean, I don't know that, sitting here right now, so I mean, we will have to check that in that case.
Okay, so, but this does not reflect your reduction of claim? This means slide 107?
Not the reduction that we're talking about right now.
So there's a new slide in the making, basically, as I say, which shows your reduction of the claim?
Well, this is history. I mean, the reduction that we're talking about now is another reduction, not the one reflected on this slide, and what we're saying is, we, Mr. Kozmerek discovered that certain adjustments had to be made to his calculations, which resulted in the reduction of our claim, and I think he offered simply for purposes of understanding to do this in Excel sheet. I mean, we are still going to reduce our claim, and we're still prepared to explain how we've done it, but I mean, this is becoming...
Don't use qualifiers for the discussion, let's try simply to be practical. Could you help us, and could you submit that slide, or calculation, recalculation, or adjustment, or whatever you call it, tonight?
Probably tonight or tomorrow morning, I think the...
First of all...
No, sorry, making the calculations right now. I mean, if not tonight, certainly tomorrow morning.
Right, and then you have it in which format, in Excel?
Whatever.
And you can see simply what we call then colloquially, go underwater, to see what the formulas do?
I don't understand that language.
You are familiar with Excel?
Slightly.
Okay, then you have to take instructions.
Now, I mean, we will explain to you what the reduction is and how we arrived at the reduction.
Okay, but can you submit tonight, at least tomorrow morning, the native Excel sheet in which all these adjustments are set forth?
I would think so, I need to check with Navigant, but I would think so, yes.
Let's do it in this way, yeah, let's first see what we get, then we take it from there.
No, I have a reminder to make on the date on which Mr. Kozmerek is going to be examined, and that's Thursday, so tomorrow morning means almost within the two days, and it bears also reminding that the Excel sheets that were provided by claimants in this arbitration were hardwired, so they were not allowing claimants expert to go, as you say, underwater, so we can't work with these, because they are actually concealing the math, and it takes weeks, if you have an Excel sheet without the math, without the formulas, to reinvent them, because you have to do backward engineering. So what claimants now propose are really calling into question the fairness for respondent to check these calculations. So they were, the Excel sheets were, and I stand corrected by my colleagues, in part hardwired, not all of it, but in part they were hardwired, so we would have to do the reverse engineering I've just mentioned. So what they're proposing is not good enough, and the timing speaks for itself.
Could you help me, what do you mean by hardwired?
Okay, Excel has formulas in it. If it's not hardwired, you change one cell, hardcoded, sorry.
Oh, hardcoded, okay.
Mr. Chairman, as respondent pointed out, we have the burden of proof, so if we make a bad calculation, that's our risk. So if we are bad at explaining what we've done, that's our problem, not their problem.
Yeah, but the point is this, you, via an expert, you're going to show that you've made adjustments to your damages calculation? Yeah, right, but, no, there is an adjustment to your calculation, and you're going to present it through your expert. You have not done, you have not done it today.
I don't follow.
The point is this, if your expert is going to show an adjustment to the calculation, whether upward or downward, in this case downward, then there will be a demonstrative exhibit that needs to be examined by the other side in accordance with the principles of due process. They should have the opportunity to look how this is done.
I don't think we have a problem with that, no?
Perfect, then, if you can, tonight, before 11:59 or 12?
Well, I mean, that's not my responsibility, but I mean, I will, I'm sure we can get something late tonight, or at least tomorrow morning.
The two-day rule is that, actually, I think Dr. Konrad is correct, if you try to keep it that way. Then that matter is resolved. All right, so we then proceed, Dr. Konrad, this is the closing, oh, sorry, the opening statement. You have your procedure in my proceedings. This is the opening statement for the respondent, please.
Good afternoon. I'm sure you've heard the voices outside of the demonstrators, and it's no surprise also if you've just followed the procedural conversation we just had, that this case is very controversial and has generated much public debate. Now, why is that? Because it's an arbitration which should never have been brought under the Energy Charter Treaty and under the ICSAT Convention. Four out of the five claimants are Germans. There's a sixth secret claimant in this room, E.ON. The case relates in part to the nuclear fuel tax law, a tax law that falls outside the ambit of the Energy Charter Treaty, if you look at its clear wording. The measure at issue was a reaction by the German government, by the Federal Republic of Germany, to the tragic events of Fukushima. It was enacted in good faith, squarely within the respondent's right to regulate, to protect the health of its people as mandated by the German Constitution, and done in such a way that it balanced the interests of all concerned, and the result was there's no negative financial impact on claimants, let alone on the only foreign party in this arbitration, Wattenfall AB. Claimants now seek compensation for their own business failures, billions for plants which were notorious for their problems. In this slide, which you see in front of you, we've marked all the German claimants. Perhaps more interesting and responsive to a question by the tribunal, the shaded red areas depict E.ON's interest, and you were there, and you've noticed how Claimants Council didn't really want to answer your question, but yes, they're claiming, on behalf of E.ON's interest, under the guise of having the two OHGs for Krümmel and Brunspittel as claimants. So you need to understand, if you look at the titles of these companies, there's no such thing as a Kernkraftwerk Krümmel GmbH. I was actually confused also when I first saw this. Kernkraftwerk Krümmel is just the name of this vehicle. The only entities, the two GmbHs making it up, is E.ON's GmbH and Wattenfall Europe Nuclear Energy GmbH. Those are the partners in this venture, and partnerships are not juridical persons. On this slide, you can see what E.ON's stake is in this arbitration, and indeed, as Judge Brouwer rightly commented, under the applicable national law, those 1.8 billion that claimants are asking would flow to E.ON through the shares that they have in Krümmel OHG and Brunspittel OHG. That's nearly half of the entire sum claimed in this arbitration. The second problem with this arbitration, to a large extent, Wattenfall's claim is tied to the nuclear fuel tax law. The Energy Charter Treaty is pretty clear, you can't be clearer, except as otherwise provided in this article, not elsewhere, nothing in this treaty shall create rights or impose obligations with respect to taxation measures. In case of inconsistency, this article shall prevail, 21-1 of the Energy Charter Treaty. 21-7A1 defines taxation measure as any provision relating to taxes of the domestic law. The nuclear fuel tax law is that, like, is just that, a taxation law. You've seen Chernobyl mentioned in Claimants' presentation. And what is the difference between Chernobyl and Fukushima, and why are the reactions prompted by it different? Chernobyl happened in the last years of the Soviet era, and resulted from a combination of problems on the human, technical, and organizational side. You've seen that in the expert reports, human, technical, organizational. Technology is only one part of the equation, and maybe not even the most dangerous part of the equation. What happened in Chernobyl was that the reactor was shut down for maintenance, it wasn't even running, to conduct a test to prove safety features of the emergency core cooling Personnel realized there was a problem and tried to conduct a scram and emergency shutdown, but it was too late. The temperature and the pressure inside the reactor had already risen dramatically, and fuel rods had begun to shatter. Two explosions occurred, and as you can see from the map, an area inhabited by 500 million people was affected. The reason for that is, why was Western Europe so particularly unlucky in the case of Chernobyl? The wind was coming from the east rather than the west, as those of us living there know all too well. Fukushima was different on a number of levels. First of all, you see the photo and you see the date tag, this is exactly the date that Wattenfall uses for its valuation. What was the difference? Fukushima was a beyond design event, unlike Chernobyl, and that is why the Reactor Safety Commission, and this is contrary to what claimants say, they tell you they checked the safety of the plants, et cetera, just in the opening, but the task of the Reactor Safety Commission was to check the robustness of the plants beyond design, and they found plants lacking in some respects. They were not concerned with an inquiry if a plant met the statutory minimum standard. What was also different for Fukushima was that this happened in a high-technology country, a country that is regarded as one of the technology champions in the world. If it can happen there, then it can happen anyway. What I've just said about beyond design and the RSK, you will find more details on that in the Graff expert report. Fukushima was also different in another aspect. Beyond the tragedy, Japan was actually quite lucky, because the wind was coming from the west, blowing most of the radioactive fallout onto the Pacific Ocean. Tokyo, as you can see on the map, is just 250 kilometers away from Fukushima, what if the wind had blown the other way? The 13th Amendment was enacted in response to this disaster, and the first sentence in the explanatory report of the bill tells you that the nuclear consequences of the earthquake disaster in Japan mark a turning point for the peaceful use of nuclear energy also in Germany. Goes on to say, "The federal government has decided, taking into account the findings of the Reactor Safety Commission and the Ethics Commission, safe energy supply as well as the absolute priority of nuclear safety to end the use of nuclear energy at the earliest possible date." And that is how the commission is called, the commissions were called, the Reactor Safety Commission and the Ethics Commission Safe Energy Supply. And indeed, what did Wattenfall say? They said, even in their observations of 31st August, that there's no comparison to the interest at stake in the present case, and by that they mean, and the actions by the German government, contrary to the undisputed health risk of tobacco use in Philip Morris. Claimants' nuclear power plants did not present a safety risk to the German public. I've just explained to you that the Reactor Safety Commission was not dealing with the minimum standards under German nuclear law, but with a robustness for beyond-design errors. Wattenfall have told you and will continue to do that over the next days, that neither Fukushima nor Chernobyl matter. They will tell you there were no problems with their plants, that they were exemplary, with a higher safety standards and worth billions and billions, but as often in this arbitration, the facts tell a different story, and although this may be outdated by the adjustments and readjustments and new adjustments and whatever adjustments claimants want to make to their sum in dispute, this was at least what was claimed as of the reply, 4.45 billion euro. Let's look at the reality of the plants. Wattenfall has shown you a video, a promotional video of the Krümmel power plant. In that video, none of the events that are listed here on this slide feature. In fact, Krümmel was riddled by a myriad of problems, and the Bantholz expert reports explains them in detail. Mr. Bantholz is perhaps in this arbitration the person that knows the plant best, but Wattenfall chose not to call him. The details are also explained obviously in the counter memorial. Although this is self-explanatory, but maybe it bears pointing out, the red signifies the times during which the plants were standing still. In fact, the plants have been standing still since July 2007, sorry, actually, 28 June 2007, so for almost four years before Fukushima happened, and more than four years before the 13th Amendment, and yet, Wattenfall says this is a very valuable plant and asking for billions of euros for it. Wattenfall also tells you it's a new plant, it was, and I recall Mr. Professor Huber's remark, arbitrary to include them with the plants that lost their license to produce energy with the 13th Amendment. Well, we have made a list, and this is also obviously included in the rejoinder and the counter memorial, which lists the plants that were shut down above the red line and the plants that were allowed to run after the 13th Amendment, and you will see that Krümmel leads the table for plants with the highest number of total incidents, and Krümmel is in the middle of all of the plants that lost their production license. Wattenfall argued from time to time that instead of Krümmel, Grafenreinfeld should have been shut down. If you just look at the number of incidents, you will find that Krümmel has nearly 100 incidents more than Grafenreinfeld, even though the plants are of a similar age. Let's look at another compilation of data contained in the second Graff report at page 10. Wattenfall told you a lot about the probabilistic data, the likelihood in which hypothetically an accident would happen. Now, Krümmel, with a likelihood of one core melt accident within 200,000 years, falls in the middle of the group of those plants that were shut down. Indeed, actually, the 200,000 years may be too positive, because as you can see from the far right column, this only relates to power production, operation only, not the combined figure for non-power operation plus power operation. Now, why is that relevant? Because you could say, well, it's binary, either the plant is running or it's not running. NPO describes also the transition between the two standards, so if you are shutting down the plant, if you're making interventions, that is captured under NPO, whereas PO basically runs, the engine runs and runs and runs, and nobody needs to do anything. So those are the critical points. Had they been included, Krümmel's number would have been worse, but it's a number that Wattenfall did not want to share with, even in the context of the European stress test. Let's look at another example, again, something that was not included in Wattenfall's promotional video, the fire in the transformer. And I'm reading now from this article. "In a report on the incidents to regulators that was available on the company website Saturday, Wattenfall said there was a breakdown in communication between the reactor operator and the shift manager. This misunderstanding involved the operation of valves designed to slow in a rise in pressure in the reactor's casing following a failure of a water pump," the company said. "The operator opened two valves for several minutes, instead of alternately opening and closing them as the manager wanted. As a result, pressure dropped rapidly in a short period," Wattenfall said. Now, that is very reassuring. Second from that, you will remember that in the promotional video, the voice said that all data is permanently recorded and stored, but after the incident when the supervisory authority wanted that information, because they were concerned that somebody might have gotten hurt, they refused. Indeed, the prosecutor had to obtain a search warrant to get the information. But apparently, in Wattenfall's reality, a burning transformer meter is totally normal, as are bursting pipes. This is a picture which was both included in the Bantholz report 03 and the closest witness statement at page 15. Also normal in Wattenfall's universe are corroded barrels with radioactive... are corroded barrels with radioactive waste. Apart from being corroded, the significant factor is also that Wattenfall subcontractor knew about those for weeks. But Wattenfall didn't by its own account because the subcontractor didn't tell it. So they were only discovered and the supervisory authority only learned of them in January 2012. So actually after Fukushima. Now, Wattenfall's own affiliates were not happy with Wattenfall's safety culture. E.ON harshly criticized Wattenfall for its continuous mismanagement. It even talked of intent, which is a German word basically for sabotage in relation to the incidents in 2007 and '09. And indeed, the Swedish government forced out the CEO of Wattenfall AB because they realized that the control agreements about which Dr. Hupp had spoken exposed Wattenfall AB with all of his assets to unlimited liability for its German plants. The Swedish government was not happy about that. Wattenfall AB then restructured immediately in order to avoid such liability. Let's look at those documents that prove this. This is a copy of a letter from the CEO of E.ON to the CEO of Wattenfall, at the time still Johansen, Josefson, before he was fired. And I quote, "It is with deepest concern that we have taken notice of the recent incident at the Krummel nuclear power plant", ellipsis. "I'm once again most concerned", Wattenfall urgently needs to take the communication action required to address these questions. Now, it's apparent from this letter that the CEO of E.ON wanted this memorialized. He could have simply picked up the receiver and called his counterpart at Wattenfall. He didn't. "A matter of intent", these words, shocking as they are, were included in the protocol of the shareholder meeting of Kernkraftwerk Krummel of 15 July 2009. That's R199. E.ON was seriously considering sabotage. That's how bad it was. And I told you that Mr. Josefson was forced out of office. Aftenblatt reported on 12 November 2009, R52. "Last June, he signed a document that regulates the damage compensation obligation in case of any potential accident at the state's company's nuclear power plant in Germany", in an article titled "CEO Pwned the Entire Wattenfall Corporate Group". And you see here also the comment by the minister in Sweden, the competent minister, Mort Olafsson, Minister for Enterprise and Energy and Deputy Prime Minister. She said, "We don't want to risk our assets in Sweden in case of an accident in Germany." And then she has previously criticized Wattenfall's management for being careless about safety. "Confidence in the company has been seriously shaken", and that's from the shareholder of Wattenfall AB. "And we have not just relied on news reports", this is an excerpt from the annual report of Wattenfall at NAV 8. "In 2010, then, E.ON and Wattenfall contemplated that E.ON would take over the technical management of the plant because it had gotten that bad." Also, the supervisory authorities, the authority belies Wattenfall's assertion that all its plants were wonderful. The authority was forced to conduct two separate investigations into claimants' reliability as operators of nuclear power plants. It only concluded the second reliability proceeding in June 2013 instead of later because as of that date, the plants were no longer operating and wouldn't again be operating. So the operation was much less demanding. And it was before that background that the reliability was assessed. You find details of that, for example, in the closest witness statement, paragraphs 40 to 43. It is before that background and having conducted a very careful review that respondents' expert came to the conclusion that there was no negative financial impact on claimants' interest. Before we go into this and the alleged breaches of the ECT in greater detail, let me give you an overview of the jurisdictional objections. As trivial as it might be, Wattenfall may not claim for E.ON's shares. And I've showed you the slide before that if claimants get what they want, 1.8 billion euro plus interest will flow to E.ON. Claimants' claims are to a large extent based on shares held by E.ON. E.ON holds 50% of the Krummel OHG, a third of the Brunsbüttel OHG, and actually 80% of Proktorf. Professor Law pointed out that there was an inconsistency in Wattenfall's formulation of claims. If they say that whoever is in their world, and please bear in mind, they bear the proof for control, that the control element was important, why are they claiming then for 20% in Proktorf? It's internally inconsistent. What is even more inconsistent is that as the president said, the OHGs are tolling plants. They operate at cost plus fee. They do not get to keep the revenues from the electricity they produce. They're like shell companies. It flows through them. And indeed, even without the electricity sharing agreements, the OHGs are fully tax-transparent. What is taxed for income tax purposes is not the income of the OHG to the OHG. would be flowing to E.ON. I called it trivial. Occidental Petroleum in Ecuador, the annulment decision, called it a common sense proposition in paragraph 289. Injury resulting to third parties should indeed be excluded. And it goes on then to say in 291, "As a matter of international law, the tribunal was precluded from awarding claimants' damages reflecting 100% of the investment because it was required to exclude from the compensation the injury caused to a third party who was the beneficial owner of a 40% interest in the expropriated investment." Now, for Krummel, E.ON is the 50% beneficial owner. And for third, in Brunsbüttel, under the ECT and under the exit convention, host state nationals cannot bring claims against their own home state. The only exception from that end, you will see that we say it's a procedural one and we have good reasons for that. Indeed, there are no reasons to the contrary, is that 26.7 of the ECT is a procedural provision in the procedural part of the ECT that provides that domestic entities which are controlled by investors of another contracting party are considered foreign nationals for the purposes of 25.2b of the exit convention. 26.7 applies only to standing and not to substantive rights under the ECT. I'm putting up the text of 26.7, and we've highlighted the word "controlled". We've highlighted the word "controlled" because that is also the subject of an understanding by the contracting parties in the final act of the European Charter Conference. "With respect to 1.6", says, and this is about the investment, "investment means control in fact, determined of an examination of the actual circumstances in each situation." It also is very clear in that it says, "Where there is doubt as to whether an investor controls, directly or indirectly, an investment, an investor claiming such control has the burden of proof that such control exists." As I said, Krummel OHG and Brunsbüttel OHG are partnerships with E.ON. And Wattenfall AB has failed to demonstrate control. Indeed, it's restructured its holdings, its German holdings, in order to avoid liability from those plants and in doing so, terminated control agreements. The restructuring placed a barrier between the German entities and the Swedish parent to escape specifically the risks of liability stemming from the nuclear power plants. You may also remember in this arbitration, this respondent has sought repeatedly to get more information about E.ON's role in this arbitration, but did not get them. The fact that 26.7 ECT and 25.2b of the exit convention only provide for procedural standing is deducible and proven by the language of the ECT, the travaux préparatoires, the object and purpose of the exit convention, and the risk of exposure to double recovery. Let's look at the wording. 26.7 of the ECT contains an express limitation. The controlled domestic, the foreign-controlled domestic entity is only included for the purposes of 25.2b of the exit convention to be treated as a national of another contracting party. In that wording, there's no reference made to the definition of investor. There's no reference made to the protections in Part III of the ECT. And that is intentional. If you look at the systematics, we have tied the relevant provisions to the table of content of the ECT to show that the definition of investor is in Part I. Again, no reference to it in 26.7. The treatment standards are in Part III. Again, no reference is made in 26.7. And 26.7 is in the part that says dispute resolution. Claimants have tried to rely on Vivendi I in support of their argument. Vivendi I had a completely different treaty underlying, which used a completely different system. The Vivendi treaty, and we have the French text on the slide, defines investor, investisseur, as a juridical person effectively controlled directly or indirectly by nationals of one of the contracting parties. So there's a definition of investor here. That's not the case in the ECT. The definition of investor, we've put up in 1.7 so you can see the difference. That is only company or other organization organized in accordance with the law of the party. So the OHGs are German under 1.7 of the ECT. They're not investors, not Swedish investors in Germany. Bear in mind, and maybe you want to take out the slide and keep it for a second, on the Argentina-France BIT because you will find a striking similarity in one of the text proposals that was discussed in drafting the Energy Charter Treaty. We'll come to that in a moment. Basic international law, the plain meaning of the text. 26.7 contains an express limitation to 25.2b. It neither applies nor alters Part III of the ECT. It only provides for procedural standing. As I promised, we're now looking at des travaux préparatoires. A proposal was made that is almost identical to the Argentina-France method of drafting. It said that a foreign-controlled domestic entity be treated as an investor of another contracting party. Let's exhibit R208. And you will note, there's a little footnote 17 indicating that Germany made a reservation stating as an indigenous investor should not escape national jurisdiction via the charter mechanism. And let's see what happened to it. That proposed text, "Treated as an investor of another contracting party", the same mechanism employed in the France-ArKenTina BIT, was not in the final ECT, as you know. Instead, it says, "Be treated as a national of another contracting state and shall for the purposes", sorry, "for the purpose of 25.2b of the exit convention, shall be treated as a national of another contracting state." It seems to be pretty clear that this change was made intentionally and it was made before the background of Germany's reservation that otherwise, had the "treated as an investor" language be used, a domestic company could use it to, quote, evade national jurisdiction. Respondents' position is also affirmed by claimants' own expert. Not in the present arbitration, but in the proceedings before the Hague Court, Professor Dolzer submitted an expert opinion. And he says there in paragraph 200, "As regards to the object and purpose of the ECT, there's no doubt that it was intended to promote cross-border investment and not to protect interstate investments." Before, in 1.75, he says, "The ECT must not be read as a paper with illusory requirements. It was meant to operate in good faith in accordance with reality. The state's own nationals were not contemplated to be beneficiaries of the ECT, whether they operated in an open or indirect or in a disguised and indirect manner." He continues in 205, "It cannot be presumed that the ECT's member states intended to promote and protect the flow of domestic funds which were recycled to another member state without any value added or any form of investment in that state, only to be retransferred into the investor's home state." Now, in case of E.ON, there wasn't even what you would call round tripping. They're simply a German investor in a German company. But that German company pretends to be Swedish and is taking their E.ON's financial interest to an exit arbitration. As I said, we don't know what E.ON thinks of that because Wattenfall did not allow us to inquire what is going on between Wattenfall and E.ON. To sum it up, the ECT intended to give access to arbitration to foreign investors, not to their domestic nationals. And it did not intend to allow the domestic co-owners of a locally incorporated company to use the arbitration mechanism. As you know, the exit conventions, object and purpose is similar. It does not want to give access to arbitration for your domestic entities. It does not want to give access to arbitration for your domestic entities. It created twenty-five-two-B because member states often require a foreign investor to set up a domestic subsidiary. Now, if an investment contract, and we know the exit convention was primarily drafted at the time for contractual relationships, if there's an investment contract between that subsidiary in the host state and the host state government, that agreement would not be able to contain an exit arbitration clause if it weren't for twenty-five-two-B. Twenty-five-two-B, by making that subsidiary a foreign national for the purposes of the exit convention, allows that contract to be arbitrateable. Otherwise, you would have had, in the relation between the foreign parent and the host state, no contract containing an arbitration clause, and the arbitration clause between the local subsidiary and the host state would have been invalid, think St. Kitts and Neves case, because that domestic entity would not be foreign. And that's the purpose for which twenty-five-two-B was created. Lastly, there's the risk of double recovery. E.ON has filed claims relating to the same measures. And the only possibility for this tribunal, given that E.ON is not in this arbitration, we're not able to get an agreement from them, for example, that they will not also seek recovery in the domestic courts, well, in fact, they're doing that. The only possibility for this tribunal to eliminate this double recovery is to deny claimant's claims that are on behalf of and for the financial benefit for E.ON, 1.8 billion, nearly half of what is claimed in this arbitration. To recap, the operating companies do not have standing because Wattenfall AB failed to prove control over them. Secondly, even if Wattenfall AB had control, they would only have procedural standing as to bringing claims that Wattenfall AB has, not on behalf of E.ON. And I will now move on to the nuclear fuel tax. Article twenty-one of the Energy Charter Treaty is maybe not the easiest provision of that treaty. Some people will say that's normal with taxes, but actually, it is not that difficult if you look at it systematically. Twenty-one-one excludes any claims relating to taxation measures. I've read it before, it says, "Nothing in this treaty shall create rights or impose obligations with respect to taxation measures." So, there's no jurisdiction under twenty-six of the ECT for claims based on such taxation measures. Taxation measures are defined by twenty-one-seven-A of the ECT, which in its little Roman I says, "Any provision relating to taxes of the domestic law." The nuclear fuel tax law is a tax law under German law. The ECT's contracting parties decided to exclude all taxation measures as a general rule. They established only two narrow exemptions, twenty-one-three for discriminatory measures and twenty-one-five for expropriatory measures. And we've raised that argument as early as our forty-one-five application. Claimants have made no claim in relation to the nuclear fuel tax law as to discrimination and expropriation. Indeed, twenty-one-five of the ECT prescribes a specific method for addressing tax claims. Loosely, you can call it the tax cooling off. It is a precursor to arbitration, it's not a condition to jurisdiction, but requires the tribunal to wait at least six months before entering an award, because the investor that is claiming under issues relating to article thirteen needs to approach first the competent tax authority. That's why we call it a tax cooling off. That hasn't happened. Wattenfall hasn't at no time activated the twenty-one-five mechanism since 2012, not until this date, nothing. Wattenfall is basing its claims on the umbrella clause. Now, the umbrella clause, and to be honest, I don't fully understand their, how they even conceive and how they can turn their claims in relation to nuclear fuel tax law into an umbrella clause, I tell you. But what is obvious is, twenty-one-three does not have an exception to the tax carve-out for umbrella clause claims, it doesn't. Other decisions that Wattenfall has relied on, especially the mechanism employed in the US bilateral investment treaties, they exempt investment agreements from the general tax carve-out. So, under those treaties, which are not applicable here, it's true, umbrella clause claims are excluded from the tax carve-out, but this is not what the ECT does, and the ECT is our applicable treaty. They're trying some kind of MFN argument, if I understand it correctly, that somehow ten-seven can be used to overcome the tax carve-out. As you will see in the next slide, this fails because of the clear wording of twenty-one-three, also the international law principle that words matter, oder es mag es wahrliat, kom periat, and if they had what they wanted, it would also upset the carefully negotiated balance of the Energy Charter Treaty. Let's look at the systematics. Twenty-one-one is the principle, total exclusion. Twenty-one-three is the exception. Ten-two and ten-seven shall apply to taxation measures, which is what we call discrimination claims. And then there's an exception to the exception, except that such provisions, so ten-two and ten-seven, shall not apply to impose most favored nation obligations with respect to advantages accorded by a contracting party pursuant to the tax provisions of any convention agreement as defined in subparagraph seven-A, Roman two. So, that is defined as any other international agreement by which the contracting party is bound. Principal general exclusion, narrow exception. That exception has an exception that says you can't use MFN to MFN another treaty. I do not think it gets clearer than that, although I admit that I would probably have drafted it a bit shorter. Also, the carefully negotiated balance, and you will remember that graphic from three years ago, it's also included in the countermemorial. Bits and treaties have a balance, it's a give and take. There may be more liberal admission regime in one case, but tax carve-outs in the case of the ECT. Then, for example, the Thai bit, which was one that claimants relied on, has a very restricted admission regime, but has advantages such as broad substantive provisions which don't have a tax carve-out. It's a balance. But what claimants have tried to do is cherry picking. They were putting together the best bits and pieces from each bit and treaty in order to create a treaty which, in that form, never existed and would never have been concluded by the parties. That goes above MFN. It's a deconstructive approach that brings up a treaty that never had any place in the real world. But indeed, it would upset the fair balance. Let me sum this up. Twenty-one-one exempts unambiguously claims relating to taxation measures from the scope of the ECT. The nuclear fuel tax is a taxation measure. It is therefore squarely outside your jurisdiction. I will now turn to the substantive alleged breaches of the ECT. What you've seen is a lot of smoke, not from the transformer, but from claimant's counsel, about how bad this is and how badly they've been treated. If you really look at the facts of the case, all that goes away, it's unsubstantiated, it's rhetoric. Your job is not to second-guess the mandate of the German parliament, but to apply the provisions of the ECT and to decide this dispute. But when, and I was listening to Wattenfall's opening this morning, claiming that the thirteenth amendment was a political decision, and they've said it quite often. I wonder when "political" has become such a dirty word? It comes from the Greek word politikos, which means relating to the people, to the citizens, to the state. And democracy is nothing if not political. It is government of the people, by the people, for the people. It has to be politic, that's its definition, and it's certainly not a dirty word. Wattenfall has the burden of proof for all of its allegations, and you will see that the allegations were not proven. The burden extends to jurisdiction, to all elements of fact supporting the alleged breaches of the ECT, the alleged arbitrariness, the alleged discrimination, the alleged expropriation, and the alleged but non-existent fair and inequitable treatment, the alleged damages, and quite importantly, causation, and we've not heard anything about causation this morning. Claimants did not met this burden. And indeed, you will remember our procedural discussion, but you will also remember, well, the multitude of procedural orders that you had to sign over the last few days, the lengths to which claimants are going to try and to overcome their lack of evidence. They disregarded the proper procedure for introducing new arguments. Indeed, we have now two redacted submissions by claimants because they were trying to surreptitiously stick in new exhibits. You had the willful disregard of procedural order number nineteen, where the exhibit two-six-three had to be struck from the record because that was the exhibit, the introduction of which the tribunal had already ruled out in procedural order nineteen. Then you were privy to the discussion about the problems, giving respondent as provided in the procedural orders, access to the demonstratives, the discussion about the new calculations by Mr. Kasmaric. And I fear this will be not the last time we have this problem in this arbitration. Think of claimant's letter of seven October announcing, and also this morning announcing, that there are new points in addition to the new points on which the tribunal already Fair and equitable treatment. Claimants have engaged in a very large debate about whether the ECT provides for the international minimum standard or as an autonomous standard, but this discussion is irrelevant for our case. There's a common threshold for both, and that threshold is not met. It's academic to say if it's one or the other, because it's simply not violated. EBIT requires a highly fact-specific inquiry in order to see whether the legitimate exercise of sovereign powers was legitimate, meaning if it balanced the interests between the state and the individual. And that's a balancing exercise, and we've shown that Germany did that, and did it successfully. Claimants are trying to take out bits and pieces of the EBIT standard, categories and subcategories. First of all, it's not necessary, but even if you do it, you will see, and I will just now demonstrate it, there was no breach. It is important to remember, the thirteenth amendment, if you look at it truly and objectively, did not have a negative impact on Wattenfall's even nuclear business, let alone on its entire portfolio of energy investments in Germany. If you plug your laptop into the socket, your laptop and you will be completely indifferent if the electricity, the moving electrons are coming from wind, biomass, nuclear, coal, lignite, petroleum, or somebody on a bicycle. It's energy, it's electricity. And electricity is produced by the big electricity companies in different ways, and they're all knit together by the so-called merit order of price, where the most expensive one that is needed to satisfy demand is price determinative. If you take out eight nuclear plants from production, the merit order will shift to the most expensive one, meaning that the conventional plans of claimants, of which it had quite a few, will profit from it. So, whatever you do to nuclear power has an effect on the non-nuclear portfolio of claimants. Respondent has made this case from the beginning that Wattenfall would have had to show us the portfolio effect. They refused, although they bear the burden of proof, they failed to substantiate their claims. Germany did not frustrate any legitimate expectations, investment-backed expectations that claimants could conceivably have had. The thirteenth amendment, you can see from the choice of plants, there were objective criteria, and it was enacted upon careful consideration of all the facts. And indeed, it went beyond the due process of law with two commissions and all important stakeholders be heard. Everybody who does investment law knows legitimate expectations have to be investment-backed. However, claimants seem to think that the ECT is an insurance for future profits whether or not there was an investment made in reliance of that expectation, meaning they are claiming lost profits without a legal basis. And this is an important fork in the road for this case. There are two types of energy production volumes, the so-called OUPVs, which are potentially irrelevant to the extent that investments were made in their reliance upon them, and the so-called new production volumes, which are completely irrelevant and were just a windfall that was only in place for about three months. The NEPV's, sir, yes?
Please finish your sentence, please.
The NEPV's were introduced sooner and soon thereafter extinguished. They were only in force for three months. Mr. President?
Yeah, but what about the argument, if understood correctly, of the claimants, that they anticipated that the NEPV's could be introduced, extend the life for the nuclear power plants, and that they made in the 2002 to 2009, and following additional investments? Would that relate to the NEPV, in your view? Because you say here "irrelevant" with an exclamation mark.
Now, we have to keep apart a few things. A law is not a law until it's introduced. So, if I were to invest on the basis of rumors and discussions, that doesn't create legitimate expectations. And you've And you've seen that in the Mihaly case, for example. Pre-investment expenses don't count. This is purely speculative. Moreover, my understanding is that our expert went painstakingly through the information provided by Wattenfall, and I understand the information that was provided was very sketchy. And they determined that there were no such investments made that were specifically in reliance on the new production volumes. The only argument that Klaimans raised, and we'll come to that in a moment, were that they were somehow bought by their contributions to the Development Fund. That is wrong, and we're going to show that in a minute. It is also, in that context, very relevant, that Klaimans were trying to conceal the settlement agreement. Because to the extent they were arguing that they had somehow bought the NEPVs, that argument completely falls away if the monies were restored to them, plus, when we come to it, and I will show it to you in the slides in a moment. The Development Fund Agreement stated quite specifically that there was no reliance possible on the new energy production volumes, indeed that they could be canceled, modified, annulled, and that in that case even any payments made under the Development Fund Agreement were non-reimbursable. But I will come to that in a moment. And actually, I have a source for you to look at in relation exactly to that question. If you look at Klein's first witness statement at paragraph 12, Klein, of course, is a witness for Klaimans, where it says, "Although a possible lifetime extension was kept in mind, we only implemented investments that we considered necessary or commercially acceptable even without a lifetime extension." So Klaimans' own witnesses say that whatever investments they made before the NEPVs were introduced were made, having the old production volumes as a basis, as he said, were considered necessary or commercially acceptable even without a lifetime extension. I hope that answers the question.
I should just, you explore that further, Dr. Klein. I think I have to do it, actually. I should add, at least in first instance.
Indeed, we have a few more sources for you on the following slide, that Klaimans have admitted that they made no investments at all in their power plants during the short period between the acceptance of the 11th Amendment, i.e. the NEPVs, and the moratorium. And we actually have an additional paragraph from Dr. Klein's witness statement, in which he says, and I quote, "We could not be certain that this lifetime extension would be the case. Therefore, we only implemented investments that we considered necessary or commercially acceptable even without lifetime extensions." That's paragraph 611 at six. And obviously, you will have a chance to examine him. I think I've already foreshadowed this slide by telling you that any reliance on the Development Fund Agreement is irrelevant and unfounded. First of all, the Development Fund Agreement did not create any obligation for respondent to adopt, maintain, or introduce NEPVs. Indeed, the opposite is true. It states that a revocation is possible. Also, Klaimans' own contemporaneous documents show that they knew that the NEPVs could be repealed any time, and the settlement agreement will, R286, we'll come to that in a second. Let's look at the text of the Development Fund Agreement. And you will see in the signature line, it's signed by two representatives of Wattenfall Europe Nuclear Energy GmbH. "The development contribution shall be reduced for the current and for the future year if in total or for individual NPPs regulations concerning additional electricity volumes or the transferability of electricity volumes are regulated, curtailed, amended, become valid, or are canceled." You can't be clearer than that, refuting that there's an expectation that they would be maintained. Let's look at Wattenfall's own documents, exhibits R120, 21, and 22. Those were prepared for the 78 Supervisory Board and the Shareholders' Meeting of the Operating Companies on 4 November 2010. Says there, "However, it cannot be excluded that future governments might abolish and/or change the basis found in the lifetime extension." Wattenfall didn't even argue they were relying on them. And now, let's look at the settlement agreement. That concerns all three plants. And it says in its operative five, "Kliamans will not raise claims of whatever kind in relation to those repayments." Let's look what Klaimans' counsel did in its letter of 7 October 2016. "Fourth, Germany in its e-mail states that, quote, 'The present dispute has in part become mute to a settlement in national courts,' end of quote. This unspecified statement is both incorrect and disingenuous. The simple fact that there has been a settlement in relation to a claim of a few million euros, which does not affect the basis of Klaimans' claim in this arbitration, continues. The court settlement merely entails a very minor adjustment of the amount of Klaimans' case, since the actual scenario will now include the settlement payment." Sorry?
It should be "case." It should be "claim."
Claim. I'm sorry. I misread. "Together with a few other small adjustments, including, for instance, further income from the sale of spare parts of less than 1 million euro, this decreases Klaimans' claims by less than 0.5 percent." First of all, a payment of, quote, "a few million euros," in fact, it's 7 million euro, is not trivial at all, especially if it's concealed from the tribunal. Klaimans had three months to disclose this. Despite Klaimans' numerous requests to put new documents in the record, this document was never on their list of documents they wished to introduce. I wonder if they had ever had any intention of informing this tribunal. And indeed, as I said, it takes away the last straw on which they base their claim in relation to the NEPVs. Let me now turn to the OEPVs. Also with regard to the OEPVs, Klaimans failed to show that they had any legitimate expectations that respondent would not introduce a measure such as the 13th Amendment. It bears remembering the following facts: The German Constitution mandates that Parliament continuously reassess the inherent risks associated with the use of nuclear energy for commercial electricity production, starting with Kalkar in 1978. Klaimans in their memorial in paragraph 550 state that they have, and I quote, "high expectations when it comes to political stability and predictability in a state such as Germany." You will also recall that we explained that the standards of the Energy Charter Treaty are indivisible. The standard is the same to which all countries, all member states, are being held. Germany is not subject to a higher obligation than Poland or Spain or Norway. Norway is a member state. I don't recall it now. This is simply a non-sequitur, because otherwise a state could rely on its deplorable state to say, "Well, a much lower threshold applies to us." The treaty standard means the same. Indeed, if you were to look at national law, which, again, we're not arguing that it informs the treaty standard, but it's the factual matrix shaping the legitimate expectations. And in that respect, the national law is relevant if there is, for example, a binding promise, or not a promise at all, if there's a legal position under the law, or if there's no position under the law. And for that purpose, for the shaping of the expectations Wattenfall could have had, in that context, Kalkar is relevant. It shaped the system in which Wattenfall invested, and nuclear power was a special animal. The Federal Constitutional Court held very clearly that nuclear power generation is not at all comparable to a normal commercial activity, and they included something which is different from the normal regime under German constitutional law. It's called ein offener Gesetzesvorbehalt, an open legal reservation, which is an area, because it is even more regulated than normally regulated areas, that it is shaped in particular by regulation, and that regulation may change. So this is a warning signal to anybody active in that area. This is an area in which regulatory changes can happen because it is such a sensitive area. And indeed, it established a duty for the legislator to reassess the residual risk and a dynamic obligation to protect health and security of the citizens. That doesn't mean Germany is an unstable state. Far from it. It is a very clear signal. If you invest in this area, we tell you, we may need to regulate and change our regulations because you're operating in such an area which has so much risk potential. We know, and that is something, again, that everybody who is active in investment law knows, that an investor has to familiarize itself with the investment climate, with the national laws of the host state. Now, Wattenfall bought HAW, a big energy concern, with a big German legal department. Indeed, Dr. Metzentin is here today, representing Wattenfall on behalf of the German, he's the General Counsel, as he was introduced. This is not an investor going far away, building from scratch a small subsidiary. They bought an existing concern with a legal department with it. Again, summing this up, Germany has never argued in this arbitration, and doesn't intend to argue, that its constitutional law could override the ECT and provide an excuse. Far from it. But what we say is, the legitimate expectations are shaped by the national law, and they show that there was no legitimate expectation by Wattenfall that respondent would not react by something like the 13th Amendment to a tragedy like Fukushima. Indeed, there was a longstanding debate in Germany over the use of nuclear power. I'm showing you two pictures concerning the Brokdorf plant from 1918. Moreover, Wattenfall's investment was taken, made in full knowledge of the decision to phase out nuclear energy. Indeed, actually, the Swedish government, the shareholder, the shareholder which you heard protested against Wattenfall's safety culture later on, was concerned what investing, having its state company invest in nuclear energy would do to its own energy policy. And they were comforted by the fact that Germany had already decided to phase out. Let's look at some documents. This is a statement of the Swedish Minister of Enterprise Energy and Communications of 3 May 2000, R7. And the minister says, "The acquisition does not mean that Wattenfall has made a direct investment in nuclear power operations, nor that a further expansion of such operations has taken place. My understanding is that the German government is discussing the phasing out of nuclear power with the owners of that country's nuclear power stations." And then, "Against the above background, I cannot see that Wattenfall's actions are in any way in conflict with the energy policy of the government or parliament, or contrary to the policies and objectives of the government." This is the shareholder, the 100% shareholder of the only foreign entity in this arbitration speaking, the Swedish government. And you've seen this timeline. This shows you the acquisition of the shares in HAW by Wattenfall against the events leading to the phase-out law of 2002. They were made in full knowledge and appreciation and embracing the phase-out. And it bears mentioning, and you've just seen this as a background to the statement of the Swedish minister, HAW happened to have shares in, at the time, four, now three, nuclear power plants. But that was not all HAW was. It was an energy company that had much more than just nuclear, and that were the parts that Sweden and Wattenfall were interested in. Perhaps even more striking, when Wattenfall acquired shares in HAW, they had to sign a commitment to phase-out. They undertook to phase-out its nuclear plant operations as soon as economically viable, when they were buying HAW. This is an image of the memorandum of understanding between Wattenfall AB and Wattenfall Germany GmbH and the Freie Enhanzerstadt Hamburg. That's R167. And it states in number three, "The object is stipulated in the statutes of HAW for the development and positioning of the company, in particular, the phasing out of nuclear energy within the scope of the regulations specified in this regard will be supported." So Wattenfall committed itself to support to phase-out nuclear energy. They later, after they had acquired more of HAW and had become the controlling shareholder, they later removed that particular obligations from the statutes of HAW. But they cannot rely on that now, on their own actions, that they've removed the commitment to support the phase-out. Moreover, that was not done until late 2002, i.e., after it had consented to the phase-out of nuclear power by signing the Atomconsent. It also bears remembering that the 13th Amendment returned to the status quo of the 2002 phase-out. It only supplemented it by fixed shutdown dates for each part of the plant, and those shutdown dates were calculated carefully in order to make it possible for the unused OEPV to be eaten up and transferred by other plants. The second add-on that the 13th Amendment gave was to undo the temporarily granted NEPVs after just three months that they were in operation. Wattenfall calls this, and I refer to their reply in 547 and 548, as a, quote, "drastic change of direction, a radical change." And then again, in their responses to certain questions in paragraph 62, "Germany spent days phasing out nuclear energy based solely on party politics." That's what they argue in this arbitration. What they argue in front of the Constitutional Court is the complete opposite. And Mr. Karpstein is here in the room. I assume he remembers what he wrote. This is exhibit R151 of 4 of... This is Exhibit R151 of Fourth of July 2012, at paragraph 249. "The Thirteenth Amendment did not generally change nuclear law. By adding fixed end dates for the expiry of the license for power operation, it only added an additional element to the phase-out mechanism already contained in the Atomic Energy Act since 2002. In particular, Article 7.1a, Sentence 1, Number 1, does not abolish any existing rights for which there are no equivalence in the new law." That is, the Kernkraftwerk Krümel OHG, and we need complaint to the German Constitutional Court, two of the parties that are also parties in this arbitration. That does sound different. And then you will remember, presentation slide 68 from this morning, claimants were showing you a document in which they, which claim, as they said, that the Federal Ministry of Justice communicated to the Federal Ministry of Interior on 16th May 2011. And they suggest that it says that the O E P Vs will not be able to be generated in their entirety. And they showed you the slide this morning. However, what they didn't mention was that this document did not relate to the Thirteenth Amendment. It related to a different draft model for a bill that did not return to the framework of the 2002 law. That draft, or that calculation model that is discussed in this document, was never enacted. This is not the Thirteenth Amendment. And indeed, respondent had pointed this out already in its countermemorial at paragraph 287. And still, claimants are arguing this, knowing that it is not in relation to the Thirteenth Amendment. Let's look at the real Thirteenth Amendment. What did the legislator do? The legislator determined what remaining O E P Vs a plant had, then what it could use up until its own shutdown date, and if it needed additional volumes to run until the shutdown date. This was called the excess generating capacity, so the need of plants for additional volumes they could take and absorb from the plants that were shut down immediately following the Thirteenth Amendment. Here, we've highlighted Brokdorf, Brokdorf, one of the plants in this arbitration. And it states it has a demand for 31.5 terawatt. Brokdorf needs 31.5 terawatt from somebody else to be able to operate from 2019 to 2021. And you will recall, this was a question you, members of the tribunal, had this morning to claimants. What happens to Brokdorf between 2019 and 2021? Well, they cannot operate, they have a demand for 31.5 terawatt. Let's look at the amounts of those plants that were shut down. That amounts just to 230 terawatt, meaning that determining the final fixed shutdown dates for the plants that were allowed to keep operating were determined so that they could not only absorb all of the remaining O E P Vs from the other plants, plus a safety margin of 16 terawatt. I think this speaks for itself. This is exactly the good faith exercise you would expect from a state that is fairly balancing the interests. What you can see also from this table here is something else. You see how little of the unused, of the O E P V remained unused as of 1st of August Brunspittel only needs to transfer 8.43% to somebody else. For the other plants, it's even more striking. Philippsburg only had to transfer 4.24%. Some, like Neckarwestheim, had used up their O E P Vs. The only exception is Krümel, with more than 30%. Now, why is that? Actually, also for Brunspittel with 8%, but mainly Krümel and Brunspittel, because both of them had been standing still. Not because of Fukushima, not because of the moratorium, not because of the Thirteenth Amendment, but because of a multitude of incidents, transformer fires and other failures. Claimants essentially ask you to reward them for the unused O E P V, which is unused because they couldn't get their plant running constantly. From 2007 to 2011, Krümel was basically standing still because of its technical and management problems. So instead of a free market, they're trying to turn the E C T into a guarantee for that plant operators. Now, that's not what the E C T had in mind. Moreover, look at something else. Here we are showing the demand for unused production volumes of companies. And you can see that the sixth claimant, Eon, has a demand for 115.8 terawatt, whereas, and if you split it up in the ownership segments, because if you treat the O P Vs like an electricity, all of these were tolling plans, so you allocate them to the shareholders, you will see that Eon can take and use up all of Wattenfall's volumes. Eon, the sixth claimant in this arbitration, that claimants want to receive 1.8 billion That takes away the E C T claim. If I can say two sentences to sum up. You can see from the calculations that the legislator tried very hard and successfully to come up with a Thirteenth Amendment that took into account properly the interests of the parties. As you will see later on in our impact section, we've done more. I mean, the exercise could end, the legislator makes a good faith regulation, it balances it, it's legal, it doesn't infringe the E C T, stop. What happens later, you know, if the sky falls or suddenly people start consuming energy, that's not something the legislator needs to be a clairvoyant for. But we did go further and looked also what really happened. But that is something for the next chapter, Mr. President.
Thank you. You have heard this morning the argument made by the claimants about public perception. Now, may I explore for a moment this notion raised by the claimant, in that the reason for the Thirteenth Amendment was the Fukushima accident. Is that correct?
That is correct. It was the reason which prompted the legislator to revisit residual risk. And Fukushima, in a way, is a black swan. You don't think a black swan exists if you only know white swans, but suddenly you see your first black swan and you're aware of their existence, and you know they happen. And with Japan, you would have expected that a country with such high technological standards would have thought of the risks in terms of the design. So if they can get it wrong, we need to look at ours. Are ours robust enough and what happens in beyond-design accidents if they happen? And that's why Germany started looking. It's nothing to do with populism, with just public perception. It was a comprehensive review prompted by the events of Fukushima.
So is your case, respondent's case, that the Thirteenth Amendment was a result of analysis of new risks, residual risks, as you call them, that have arisen?
They're not new residual risks. For example, let me give you another example. Put yourself in the shoes of somebody 2,000 years ago. You are not aware of meteors in the solar system because you don't have telescopes. But the risk that a meteor will strike you exists. Well, it struck back in the dinosaurs, who had no perception of that risk, but the risk existed. So it's not a new risk because it's an old risk, but perception of the risk, knowledge about the risk, appreciation, things like that happen that are prompted when such a black swan exists.
Maybe we should explore this with the experts further. You have this probabilistic risk analysis, which you didn't use. This was a risk that was not factored in, as far as I understand it, what happened in Fukushima. Is that correct?
Yeah. So you have to look at the law, the nuclear law has certain statutory minimum requirements for the design of the plants. For example, they're designed to withhold a flood that occurs in certain timely intervals. That is the design of the plant. The plant is not faulty if it complies with the design. But in Fukushima, something happened which was outside the design of the plant, which destroyed anything. So when that happens, you need to look, is my design actually still valid first? And then, that was the robustness test of the reactor safety commission. And secondly is, in the light of what happened, is the residual risk still something we can bear? And if you look back at the Kalkar jurisprudence, in 1978, the legislator and the Constitutional Court appreciated, there is a residual risk that we cannot combat by technology. Are we or are we not prepared? Is it reasonable that this risk be born and we continue with the technology? Or do we think that risk is too high and not bearable and we need to stop?
If we leave a sign now and enter in hypothetical situation, if I may, and assume now that the Thirteenth Amendment cannot be based on sound risk analysis, no safety concerns by a reactor safety commission identified that are additional safety concerns, but is purely enacted for reasons that the perception of the public is saying, well, look, we find it too frightening, has become too frightening after Fukushima, to have still nuclear power? If that is a public perception, this change, and that translates that in legislation, a legislative amendment, how would that legally translate into the investment protection under E C T? And I'm sure, I make a number of assumptions, and I don't ask you to do anything, but assume now that this would be the case.
It is almost an impossible hypothetical because you're assuming that the public is wrong.
No, I'm sorry, no, that's not at all. Let me be very clear. In this, the public may have a legitimate concern in and of itself. And I'm not saying that the public is wrong, but we live also in perceptions in this world. There may be a whole system in place for analyzing risks with nuclear power plants, but nonetheless, there may be other aspects that cannot be anticipated. And one of this is that the public thinking about nuclear power generation changes. Now, if that is the case, and if that is a public concern, and that does not say whether it's right or wrong, simply the perception changes in the public. How does that translate legally into the E C T?
Let me answer it in two things. First of all, I think we are also, in a way, the public. So 20 or 30 years ago, it was deemed acceptable to dump acid and nuclear elements into the sea. We today think that's no longer acceptable. And although the rise of international environmental law started with the Bering Sea arbitration, it has taken leaps and bounds. So perception of, is a relevant factor. Otherwise, we wouldn't be talking about public environmental law nowadays. Secondly, even if we put this aside, I've just explained to you how the legislator went about. The legislator, even if it was just public perception, if you say, let's take it one step further, say it was, and this is completely irrational to assume, it was a whim on which we enacted something like that, which we didn't. But the way in which the legislator did it, taking into account the legitimate interests of the stakeholders, making sure that the old energy production volumes could be eaten up, even then, there would be no breach of the E C T. Because the Thirteenth Amendment was designed to make sure that all the financial interests of the stakeholders would be protected. So the first thing, is it perception or did the legislator have a right or not to change its viewpoint as to, do we want to continue with nuclear energy, is irrelevant because that back end, how they did it, avoids any risk of a breach. But even that, and I think there, I have to disagree with your hypothetical, the decision to phase out was taken in 2002, not with the Thirteenth Amendment.
Hypothetical is hypothetical.
Absolutely.
It's not just connected to the reality, for the purpose of the argument. Point is this, because I come here to legitimate expectations. You said, well, this nuclear power was already known in 2000, 2001, to be a sensitive area.
In 1978.
Yeah, but in the German, yes, exactly, it went up and down, but then it became in 2000, when the investment was being made.
That it was dying, that it was going to go away.
Exactly. So, but does then the legitimate expectation include the risk that after another accident with nuclear power plant somewhere in the world, the public perception may change about nuclear power generation?
I think that's not protected by the E C T because the decision to phase out the energy form had been made in 2000, 2012. So it was dying out. It was only a question to when. And the way in which the Thirteenth Amendment was implemented was that the expectations that were under the 2002 law were preserved. Therefore, actually, there is no need to second-guess the decision of the German parliament. You can also question whether an arbitral tribunal has the right to do that. I don't think so. But the way in which the Thirteenth Amendment was implemented makes sure that there cannot be any breach.
No. But the question, this question, what we have is basically, is how do we place legally public perception within the context of this type of investment protection provisions? Yeah.
And I think the president's question is essentially the same that I asked, as the question I asked the claimants earlier. And you could put it crudely by saying, when you ask what the government's justification was for taking this step, why is it not enough for the government to say the people wanted it? Why do we have to be concerned with the technical proof on probabilities of accident and things of this kind? And is your position that it is necessary for there to be some... And is your position that it is necessary for there to be some basis, which is what claimants say, there has to be some kind of rational basis supported by evidence? Or is your position that the government can do it simply as a matter of policy, that it had already trailed in its earlier statements on nuclear policy?
First of all, the, the state may take the view, the public wants it, we pass a law because it's a democracy, this is the decision we make. There's the referendum in Britain where the public decided to exit from the EU. That is a legitimate exercise of state power to leave the EU, to exit from nuclear power. That's neutral, that's their right to do that. Now, how do you do that? Can you kick out all the Poles tomorrow and the Romanians and the Germans and the French from England? I don't think so that a state should be allowed to do that and say that, you know, all the apartments they own in London are forfeited. No. That, I think, would trigger a reaction by international law. But the Thirteenth Amendment did exactly not do that. The government, in implementing that decision to phase out nuclear power quicker, was then in a very considered manner and having due regard to the financial interests of the stakeholders. So it was, due process has many meanings, but that is one way of do an accelerated exit from nuclear power in due process.
So to put it crudely, your position is that the, the taking of the policy is fine, but the respondent is answerable for the manner in which it implemented it?
To the extent that a manner of implementing such a decision violates international law, yes.
Yes.
And also, I would qualify the first one, which is, again, in our hypothetical, not even applicable, but if the decision taken by the state were per se, say, a violation of used coal guns, then that, of course, would be illegal too.
You have the, you can decide you make when you want to have the break.
I think.
You want first to conclude, FET?
Let's do that.
Okay.
Let's go to the alleged arbitrariness. And we're following the structure from Claimants' Memorial, paragraph five, six, one. They argue the Thirteenth Amendment was inflicted on claimants, quote, "without serving any legitimate purpose." We've just had a discussion about legitimate purpose, and Fukushima, in my view, also is a very good purpose. I feel a lot of safer, too, and I think it's legitimate that a state reacts to an event like that by rethinking the speed of the phase-out. Their second argument, again, using the word political is a dirty word, and they lie to, and I quote, "in order to improve its chances to win the upcoming elections in Let's see what the timeline actually says. The upcoming elections in Schleswig-Holstein were upcoming in more than a year. What's the third point they make? No reasons for specifically shutting down the KKK plant. The KKK plant was shut down for purely political reasons. And we've told you numerous times that the decision to include Krümel and which plants were shut down was consistent with objective factors such as grid stability, incidents, construction line. Now, claimants also this morning attacked the use of consistent. Well, consistent is just a descriptive of what really happened. And let's just look of the, of the objective framework of what plants were allowed to continue running and what plants were shut down as of the Thirteenth Amendment. So, and you can see from this one that all sixty-nine construction line power plants were shut down immediately with the Thirteenth Amendment. Krümel is a sixty-nine construction. So what claims are arguing is not that they were discriminated because they were treated just the same as all other sixty-nine plants. No, they think they were discriminated because they were not treated differently from the sixty-nine plants. It makes no sense. Let's look at the number of incidents. Above the line is all the eight plants that lost their production license. Krümel and Brunspittel, Brunspittel is the plant with the single most number of incidents, four hundred and fifty-eight. Krümel, three hundred and one. That's almost a hundred incidents more than the plants that were allowed to continue. Grafenreinfeldt, the plant that is of a similar age as Krümel, had two hundred and fourteen rather than three hundred and one incidents. Again, they say that they should have been treated as an outlier, continuing to run, although their number of incidents would have been eighty-one incidents more than the next plant allowed to run, Grunder, with two hundred and twenty incidents. If you look at it at the graph, you see KKB and KKK are exactly in line with the cohort in which they were put, those plants that lost a license for energy production. They were not in line with the cohorts of plants that was allowed to continue. Indeed, both would have been outliers, including them in the group that was allowed to continue. That would have been arbitrary, not the opposite. Grid stability, as you've seen from my chart with the lot of red showing the operating history of Krümel, you've seen that Krümel and Brunspittel were not running at the time of the Thirteenth Amendment. They were not contributing to grid stability. On the contrary, because of their not really reliable production, they were posing a risk to grid liability in northern Germany because of their sudden outages. Moreover, what you also see is, you see a cluster of plants in the north and a cluster of plants in the south. Grafenreinfeldt is in northern Bavaria. You may also have seen the discussion about a electricity autobahn between the north and the south. The grid in the south needed Grafenreinfeldt. Krümel and Brokdorf, sorry, Krümel and Brunspittel were not needed in the north to provide grid stability, and in the north, where the wind blows, where there's a lot of renewables on the net. Indeed, the Ethics Commission specifically pointed to grid stability. This is Exhibit R one hundred and thirty-four, page six. The sequence for removing the nuclear power plants from the grid should be determined by the remaining risks of the plants and their emphasis, significance in the regional electricity grid unless other additional risks for the nuclear plants have been proven by intensified analysis on reactor safety. What is the standard for arbitrariness? The famous LC formula, a willful disregard for due process and act with shocks or surprise, at least surprises, a sense of juridical propriety. No, I'm not shocked. I don't think it's surprising to include Brunspittel and Krümel in the cohort of plants that were shut down, nor is it shocking that in response to Fukushima, the German government took a very detailed view of and reassessed the residual risk and made a determination whether or not it could be borne longer or whether the exit should be accelerated. I believe before, even though I'm still on FET, I think with due process, it is somewhat of a different chapter, so this would be a good time for a break.
Twenty minutes recess.
Thank you.